Let us be people who are respectable, who honor your name and uphold your values, who do what is right and deal justly. And we ask that this becomes a nation, once again, who serves you in every way. And we all pray, amen.
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 Pastor Chris? Other input? And then let's get to the agenda. We'll go to the mayor's report. In the Friday report, Greg asked you to hopefully bring your counselors. We are working to plan a retreat of John Devine. The goal is to have a Friday night, Saturday retreat, such as we did in Manhattan. It will be outside at Lincoln Garden. The dates that John has available are Friday the 8th and Saturday the 9th of April. How does that work for this councilman?
If this one does not work for you, then some of those things are to fall through. You know, it doesn't help.
Anybody else besides Kelly at this time?
So we're meeting a date for that or something?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, that day.
I'm going to put Betty down for maybe.
We're talking about evening Friday.
Friday evening, correct. And Saturday through mid-afternoon or whatever, just to come back that night.
Yeah, probably one of them.
Eighty-twenty?
Probably.
Okay.
We'll go the same hours, that eighty-twenty.
My goal of this is really to find, I think last time was great in Manhattan, for John to work with us and we question there before we get to the meeting, you know, just to stimulate some thoughts. Review, like we were talking earlier, our goals, you know, where we have, what's how they look like, what's, you know, the other areas, recreation or any of those kind of things. But really, John will send out, and through John, send out the questions, and we get a spread for that and then have discussion Friday night and then just Saturday. So. Next item in the mayor's report is I'd like to talk about 240 Cole property. Earlier today, I called and Greg and I talked about it last week. He was going to reach out to the property owners and let them know that we're going to talk about it tonight. Earlier today, I asked him, John, to go out and look at the property, see what the options are. What I'm really looking for is the direction of council. What's, what direction do you want to go on this property? In June, July of last year, it was bought at the share sale. Worked through some other areas, thought it was going to be in December, you know, November, December, did it come down, could get there. We had it cleaned up once, looked pretty good for a day, you know, and then pretty soon everything started coming out. The real issue is the structure itself, and that's what Tim was out there and looked at today. You know, looking at it, yeah, the junk is not tidy or not good for any of those, but the structure itself is a real concern, and he was there today and took pictures and that. And so I hope we let Tim present what he's found and then would like to get a direction from you as to what direction you want to go. And tell us a couple of options, Tim, or the, you know, what the option that you see that would approach it, says, from what we're seeing.
While your passing goes out, Tim, is there still considerable stuff inside?
Uh, I would say yes. I did not go look into the building.
No, no.
Wasn't. But you can help to see some.
Yeah.
Is in the floor.
What's your second around the pictures you took today of the building, the structure itself?
Yes. Uh, we have two codes that would be permanent to this. One is the unfit building, unfit structure, and we certainly make a case for that. It's, I have not seen the inside, but there are certainly physical defects in buildings that are actual. The other, the other method that you might go at would be the environmental code, which is how we got, we've done it before, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. That's what Tim has done before. I'm thinking if we go after unfit structures, I believe we probably make a shift that took the vacant, because they were our rock. We debated on that building before, we put a twenty-something dollar roof on it, and we never got it out of the lineup. I think Bob would go that way again personally. If we go environmental code, and I think we can establish that it's a legal in the neighborhood, and that's one of the criteria that's taken by it. It's certainly in greater disrepair than anything else out there by a long shot. So I think we can make that case. If you go environmental code and if you can prove it, you can, I need to take it every day, and every day is an offense. And I think, I think the difference this time is there's a different owner. You, you no longer have the previous owner to deal with and have the bank. I don't, I don't imagine them wanting to drag that out to the court, so.
So with that, Tim, what is the, and the direction that you as staff recommend, and what is the procedures to get to that point? What would be directly, possibly direction?
We probably need to contact him. Well, I don't think we need to. We'll, we'll have to just survey notice that we found it to be that way. He has a period of time, let me get that maybe right here.
Bill, you can join in whenever you want to too. I'm very familiar with this.
We have, he has, he can ask for a hearing. We survey notice, and he can request a hearing, and then.
Just for clarification, Tim, when you're saying he, are you saying?
Over, over, okay, may request a hearing.
Right. I just want to make sure I'm.
Yeah, you know, it's been twenty-three years, and he knows that. It's a damn.
What's other, what's his bad out there?
Anyway, yeah, just survey notice, have a hearing, and.
Is there a timeframe on notice to hearing?
I believe it's fifteen days.
I can't remember.
Uh, if you're, they have ten days to request. They write, if they would make a timely request, might use whatever the person tried for. Hearing shall be held by the government body as soon as possible after the filing of the request, therefore, and the person shall be invited by the city at the time and place of hearing in these five days in advance thereof. In any such hearing, the council may represent the person and appreciate the effects. Hearing need not be conducted before you do formal approval of habits and record decision in service. Upon the conclusion of the hearing, the government body shall record its determination on the matter by adopting a resolution and serving the resolution upon the person.
I think you get a brief report from Tim. Consider it the next meeting and establish a hearing date at the next meeting. I think that's the best procedure.
What I was looking for was direction from council. What direction do you want?
If, if council, we should.
If we so direct, you know, staff to move in that area, you know, have a discussion at night, those are the things that can happen.
Can I ask questions, Tim?
Yes.
Is there evidence of any vermin, rats, mites, gnats?
I saw, I saw birds flying in out the broken windows. I didn't see any tracks or shit out, and like special riot. And we, it wasn't good tracking whether they had.
Isn't it still a problem that apparently those things that are there are Joe's?
I mean, he has a.
Every time I go by, he's out, standing out there with his foot on his truck.
Bill, does his, does the property on the property doesn't interfere with our process?
I don't think it does. I mean, it's not our real question to determine who owns the personal property that are on the site. I'm frankly amazed that the bank has not taken some action. I would assume that they have a security interest in any of that personal property. And frankly, the bank can take charge of it if they wish to do so.
You know, I thought when the representatives of the bank were here and we spoke to them, we made it pretty clear at that time that we were tired of messing around with this problem. And I feel that we should proceed as hardball as we can.
Absolutely.
I agree. I, I think this is going along enough.
Regardless of who the property owner is, they're, both past owner and the current owner are aware of what and how we felt last time.
And you're, am I assuming correctly that you would go to the environmental code directive opposed?
Whichever one is the most hardball, and whichever one can give us.
Do you want to pay for knocking the building down?
No. No, I don't want to pay for that. Yeah.
What I'm hearing then, there seems to be consensus around the room that we would pursue this, direct staff to do that, work towards that. Greg will be back Thursday, and, and we can get with Greg if we want definitely his, you know, on board and where we're headed and that. So keep that in mind, and also Greg, send an email to work towards that conclusion of what we have here.
Does this answer your questions?
I have.
What do you have as a way of?
I'm directed by council.
I know, and you just did a beautiful job.
But. Till we track a different day.
My questions are answered.
Okay. Do you have any idea what kind of timeline is involved in trying to go with the environmental loop in order to get something to happen there?
I think there's, I have to give them those, I think they have ten days to request a hearing, and I assume they would.
I think you adopt the resolution, and then they have X number of days. I can't remember if it was thirty or whatever.
I, the one thing that was unclear to me was how many days between requesting hearing and holding hearing you had to have. Said as soon as possible.
I can't remember.
Can I ask a question, please, if I may, so?
Let's go to the next.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Tim. Thank you for your work today on that. Last item I add is remember recycle. I see we have, we have some in the room. Anything, anything special you're here for, just to see how government works? Who are you with?
Well, we were just coming along with our friends behind us, and they invited us to hop in, so we're gonna shoot that, so.
Okay. All right.
Pretty exciting, isn't it?
Nope. Worth the pressure.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. What is your desire?
No favor.
Second. And if it's seconded, all those in favor, inter.
Okay. Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Motion carrying, planning and zoning, nothing, no business with new business.
We have a question, may I ask a question?
Please.
Planning and zoning, the status of the reason request on Harrison on the piece of property or across from Scotts?
Hearing will be taken.
And that's, that's somebody else.
Oh, yeah.
The reason was approved at previous meeting. There is a, there was a request anticipated to zone future annexed ground that will tie into that parcel, and our sense was, let's go ahead and get a recommendation from P&amp;Z so that it's ready to go to be annexed in if it's requested, as they see free property, and P&amp;Z agreed with that and voted for that recommendation. While we don't have an annexation request on table, so we're not discussing it yet. I had conversations with the future governor, I believe, and things are progressing.
Okay, thank you, Gary. New business item A, hearing request from Mr. Hulse, reference of property on the Valcom Land Trail between Lincoln and State Streets. Tim and his team sent a certified letter that was returned and did a hand serve on the fifteenth, and what it does, it gives Joe a time to request a hearing. The recommendation is to set this hearing up for our next council meeting, which will be on the twenty-first. What is your desire?
Move we approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Betty has a question about.
The, the current rules that we have were things like notice, and this is for the city attorney. The ordinances that we have now with regard to notification, hearing, the time spans in between each of those, are those all locally driven, or do we have state direction that we have to follow?
Depends on, it depends on which section you're pursuing, but, yeah, in most cases, I think we are not outlined at all timeframes.
But could, could the process be tightened up so?
I really don't think so.
Okay.
I, I'd have to look at it seriously, but I don't think so.
Seems like fifteen days is a, you know, is a long time to wait to.
Well, yeah, not, not really when you give a notice of something that needs to be corrected.
Is that fifteen business days or fifteen calendar days?
No, it is.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Hearing then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Gary, please set that on for our next meeting. New business item B. Tim, then, you want to approach basketball street repair bids?
We have a chief of debt from Apex shares for over a hundred fifty-three thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty cents for paving, four hundred and five hundred block of West Seline, the four-inch miller overlay, one hundred and three hundred block of West Swenson, the four-inch miller overlay, and one hundred block of more third for a six-inch miller overlay with a flash. And as I pointed out, this is eighty-five, eight-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars less than quote or quoted last fall, and mostly due to drop in water prices.
What is your desire?
I'll make the motion, we approve what Tim requests.
Apex shares in amount of a hundred and fifty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty cents. Correct. Second.
Second.
Tim, is this part of the, this is continuing on the plan? The here we set out for a shrink tree, we have planned, we put out, this is just continuing down, that's the next step, next step. Why do you just want to pick flash stabilization and the others do not?
Well, the others are probably already six-inch asphalt, and we're going to mill for, go back before the, the third street was, we did that probably about nineteen ninety-five, it was only four-inch at the time. I was pretty new here and I didn't realize that us were gonna run there. So it's, it's in bad shape. I think we need to, I would love to see the concrete, but I think we're still waiting until we can find concrete. So I think six-inch asphalt and subgrain treatment will, will last a lot of time.
Tim, I have an issue here. Our proposal and contract on third street says four-inch milling and four-inch paving. I do not six-inch under quote.
Uh, I do not use. It will be six-inch.
So their quote is still accurate?
I, it's supposed to be, I, you know, I have that one there.
If you want, you can come on.
I got it, I got it. I did not catch that. I will.
Still, I would want to handle that if it's a difference in that, if we find, he comes back, or can we approve it with the?
You, you can approve it based on the quote that Tim, the, the specs that Tim has given you. If they don't meet the specs that you approved, then you don't have deal.
Although we can, well, we've got, I'll tell you what, we've got until school leaves up before I have to have this, I wanted to.
You know, by next meeting.
But you can approve it tonight based on six-inch asphalt. If they don't want to meet that, then you're back to square.
Or we can just, tell you what, until the next meeting, we can do that too, because I'd rather do a clean one.
Yeah.
They're not, if they really are only getting four-inch, they're not changing, two-inch.
I'm gonna withdraw my motion then.
Who's the second?
Rick.
Oh, it's wrong.
Okay. Table out. Did I take a motion bill? I don't remember. Be on table now.
Ah, yes, you do.
For motion to table?
I move we table until the next regular scheduled meeting.
Second.
They moved in second to table, all those in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Motion table. Let's put item C. Tim, this is you again, Chip Seal?
Yes. This is. It's a thirty, or eighteen thousand for the square yard of Chip Seal. On the Kennedy Court and Kennedy Street, West Jefferson Street, four five hundred West Swenson, one three hundred East Union, one three hundred West Union. The bid is thirty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-five cents, and it's from Circle Seat Paving, who is the company that purchased our, our previous contractor, I played sand with him for thirty-some more years. Human health issues there, they had to get out of the business, they sold their equipment at Circle Seat. They, they did a lot of research, they, they felt like they were the company most likely to carry on the, the work, the level of work, workmanship that they, I can't figure out.
What is your desire?
I'll make the motion to approve Circle Seat Paving to perform the twenty-sixteen chip silling at a cost of thirty-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second. And move the seconded questions?
He said ninety-five is fifty-five.
Ninety, oh, okay.
Eighty-four.
Not gonna be fifty-five.
Nine fifty-five, eighty-four.
No. I will correct that to be thirty-eight thousand, oh, there's a difference.
Yeah, background has thirty-eight ninety-five, the recommendation has thirty-eight nine ninety-five.
Yeah, I read the recommendation.
Circle seats.
Let me go with.
For business bid, she is not thirty-eight nine fifty-five eighty-five.
Yes, I will make my recommendation. Thirty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-five and eighty-five cents.
Still second. Is there any seconded questions?
Do you have, have you talked to anybody else that used circles, the circle seat?
No, I, I. They don't mess with.
Is there a company, it's not an existing company that bought this?
It's a existing company, and they do a lot of work out by God, but they've not done chip seal before. We will limit it on, to, you know, anybody that does around here. I'm going based on the recommendation of people I'm used to.
Or Sam, your faculty Sam. You tried it? And you basing it on the recommendation of I played Sam? Tim, will the rock that we've used in the past be the same that we're putting down this year?
It will be the same that we used last year.
Okay.
It's half-inch rock, and I know some people did it back there, but I thought it was that one.
The fact that oil's down so far now, does this price reflect that, or is it still?
Yes, that's why. Well, it's five cents a square yard less than last year. The preliminary estimate they gave me last fall when I was including the program together was for two twenty-five a square yard, and this one was three fifteen, so it's ten cents less than last year, five cents less than last year.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kelly? Yes. Betty? Yes. Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Becky? Yes.
Motion carrying. Move on to item D, water meter and ERT bids.
Oh, we'll get.
We're gonna be there a while.
We've got twelve conditions supplied, there's supply of three hundred five-inch quarter meters, four inch years. At a price of forty, forty-eight thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars. This is to continue the replacement program that we started last year. Previous three D O meters were ten-year battery life, and they are, if we stay on our cycle here, we'll replace them as about as they're new with these. The new meters will be more accurate, and you've got twenty-year battery life on them.
Is that the need, I'm sorry, what's your desire?
I don't know, do we approve this?
Are we just approving?
One second.
There's, there's two items on here, so.
What are you motioning, Dave?
Oh, um, I'm not sure. Forty-eight.
Forty-eight thousand thirty-six.
Six thirty-six.
Do you want to take them together or separate, Gary?
If, if it's delineated, delineated in the motion, that it's, this money goes here and this money goes there, it can all be in one motion.
Dave, do you want to add?
Yeah, so the.
Seven thousand five hundred.
The motion then would be, what's the total with that bill?
Put them separate, if you would, that way.
Okay, okay, the first one is forty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars point zero zero.
From HD?
Yes. HD supply.
And then the other one? Are you gonna do both of them?
Twenty-seven five forty.
I'll do whichever you want.
Why don't you do separate motions, because you have separate suppliers here.
Okay, so.
First motion is from HD Supply for forty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars for three hundred and twenty-four total water meters. What is your? It's a motion and for second?
Second.
Move the seconded discussion. Tim, my question is gonna be twenty-year battery on the sender or on the meter itself? Is it the ERTs the center? They're both twenty?
Yeah, they're, they're actually more. And if they replace it prior to the twenty year, then you give a new warranty, okay?
What we're showing is water loss throughout the city that, you know, these days, I don't want.
If you don't ask me about January, then I'll tell you it's about seven point eight five percent.
And that's an acceptable margin?
The state doesn't get excited until you're over fifty, okay?
And why aren't we gonna talk about January?
Because it's.
Crazy.
It's how, yes, it does it every year, but they not come up with an explanation.
And it's always January.
And then it'll average out, and it'll be back to seven and a half percent for us through the year.
Additional discussion on the HD supply quote. Gary, roll call, please.
Becky? Yes. David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty? Yes.
Motion carrying, second portion to this, Tim?
It'd be the herbs which is transmitting unit for the meters, and we, because of the brand that we use, we have to pay a supplier, which is a lot of supply, so three hundred and forty-four herbs for forty-seven thousand five hundred forty dollars.
What is your desire?
I have the motion to, I will make the motion to recommend the purchase of twenty-seven, of three hundred and twenty-four ERTs in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and forty dollars from Seline's supply, from Seline's supply.
And move the second.
Second.
Further discussion?
Explain to us what an urge is.
It's a transmitter. An electro-radio transmitter.
Okay, and is this the broadband, the bandwidth that that's in?
Broadband.
Yeah, okay. Unregulated.
Do you still drive by, three meters by driving by?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you want to know, it's, we've gone from two rears over nine days down to one rear in about three and a half, and we still haven't got all of our, everything up there in the leg that we're working on, so.
Okay. Additional questions? Roll call, please.
Kelly?
Motion carry, Tim, you got one more here on the slide. Variable frequency drive for both wells, are there two wells?
Two of our three wells, which is the previous one, a year or two ago. This is from where our well service here in town, they've, they've been giving us really good quotes. They were significantly less than from number nine and maybe not bid others, but I think this is a very comparable price compared to the size. The, the VFD gives us the ability to ramp up and ramp down so we don't have hard starts. Definitely save a lot of wear and tear on the pump and motor. It allows us to dial in the amount of water that we're pumping. When we have maintenance done on the, on the towers and if we can't use them, then we have to go to direct pressure. In the past, you've seen water just pouring out of the hydro tube, so we have to leave the pressure. The VFDs were, were able to dial that in and really minimize any waste.
What is your desire?
I'll make the motion to approve anyone's loss service for the installation of two VFDs on our city wells at a cost of fifteen thousand five hundred and forty dollars.
Your second.
Second.
And then the seconded further discussion. Are all the VFDs the same then? I mean, is there, is there a parts issue or does it matter to one?
No, their size is different.
Okay.
You know, we had like a twenty five horse on number nine and these are definitely under chance, so their size is different.
Okay.
I have a question, it says on the estimate, transducer if needed?
We will not need a transducer, I don't think, but I can't swear to it telling you that.
So the price could be less?
Price could be less.
Oh, it won't be more.
Of course not.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Um, Betty, yes, Eamonn?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Betty, yes, Kelly, yes.
Thank you, Tim, okay. Step up, come up on shape structures at the pool.
Yeah, I'd like a little commentary.
On shape structure?
No, I don't miss, but it's, um, I guess I'm a little, I, I wish we had more bids and more numbers to look at. We just spent about three hundred thousand dollars here on various items and we had bids from one contractor for the most, majority of it. And I understand we have some contractor or some different items that that's the only one that does that in the area, but spending that kind of money. I guess I would like to see more bids come in. I mean, normally, uh, in the past, we've had two to three different bids from different contractors and different people and it's a significant amount of money. I, I just think we should be able to seize a little bit more of that.
Okay.
So the two bids in front of you are for the wood structure that's at the pool. And those of you that attended the study session last summer that we had at the pool, this was one of the items we looked at closely and we're trying to decipher whether it was something we just repair, upgrade it, pull it out altogether and do something entirely different. Um, so past couple of months, we've collected a couple of bids on it, um, both of them are drastically different from each other. Um, and if you look at the picture that I have in your packets, you'll see that there's four, um, vertical, uh, support beams in there. And the contractors that I've had in that looking at it, um, they deemed that of the whole entire structure, those four support beams are actually still in pretty decent shape. Um, which was a good thing, cause otherwise if we did try to repair a whole thing, take it out, that would mean we'd have to go in there, um, dig up the concrete that's in there, put whatever new thing in there and then lay some new concrete. So that would hike up, you know, our overall costs much more than it is now. Um, and I should also note, we actually have two decent, two structure for identical to each other. Um, one sits between the water slide and deep in and then the other one sits within the baby pool area. As we look a little bit more closer at both of them, we were able to establish that one that is by the water slide and the deep in, um, this part worse than our one that's in the baby pool. So at this time, we're only looking at fixing up the wood structure, um, which is over by the water slide and the deep in. And so these two, uh, bids that we do have, um, the first one from super siding for four thousand nine hundred seven and seventy nine cents. Um, he came in, I initially thought it was these guys coming in and looking at just doing an all wood repair on it, fixing the wood that's there and working around it. And with super siding came in and they kind of proposed this whole different idea where, um, number one, put a roof on it. Right now, there's just pieces of lumber on top and then those gaps in between. And to me, that's not very functional, there's still sun that's coming through there and it's not throwing any shade in any sort of way. Um, so they are proposing to put a roof on it, it'd be an A frame, nice file, it'd kind of be reflected with what the pool has to go.
It's metal.
It'd be metal. Um, and then kind of the body of the structure would be wood. And then the other thing we looked at was the seating area, um, it's pretty small, so we were looking at widening that. Uh, but with super siding, they proposed they updated a installation of benches that are made from recyclable material. If you scroll down a little bit, there are pictures of these benches. You can get a new glue, ordering, um, basically he can install them in there and then they can be attached to those support beams that are already there. Um, he also said if we didn't go that route, then we could just stick to the wood and widen the wood as well. Um, but obviously that would, um, change that bid quite significantly, I believe the, the cost of mono just of the benches, about five hundred piece for each one plus the labor of installing them. And then the other bid, that one would be an all wood replacement, he would just go in, begin with the A brick frame, um, be all wood, go through, replace a bunch of the wood that is in bad shape right now. Um, and then he would also go in and widen the bench as well.
What would he do with the roof, I'm sorry?
It would still be an A frame roof, but it would be all wood.
Okay.
But he didn't do it fine.
He did not give me a drawing, there's just a whole bunch of, um, dimensions listed on there and then the type of wood.
These, um, did we need a motion? Or, or do we?
Yeah, let's get a motion.
Um, but.
Well, you don't know which one of these were motions about.
Yeah, I can't, I was trying to make a motion about it, I had my questions.
I don't think it's that difficult, then we can go ahead and discuss it.
Okay.
If you need additional information in order to make.
On, on these, on these improvements for the seating and all that, are, do those have, are those anchored into the concrete?
The, the benches off or can we put those, um, new ones?
Both.
If we just did the wood, those are actually anchored into the side of the support beams.
Okay.
Whereas the benches installed in, yes, they'd be anchored in at the bottom, um, in where the existing wood benches are.
But it would just be drilling through the existing concrete, it doesn't mean tearing anything up and throwing down and brining new concrete.
Okay.
Is there any warranty or estimated life of the metal last year?
Oh, the benches, yes, he did not give me the exact details on that part of it, but yes, I would imagine there's with those, warranty all though.
Well, I'm much in favor of the wooden ones. Those kind of bases like that can get hotter than heck in the summertime.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, so hot that you can't possibly sit on them without some kind of insulation between. And I think that's a poor choice for, for by the diving boards and other places where you don't just normally carry a towel with you to put it over a bench.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's why I would prefer whether we refurbish the wood ones that are there or building a new one. My.
What, how long has this pergola or shade structure been?
I'm not sure how long.
It's, it came with the pool, so that goes back fifty?
Over twenty years.
Over twenty years.
Ninety six. Ninety six. Kate, do I understand the pergola's gonna go away and you're gonna go to an A frame trash like this?
Basically just kind to mimic how we have an A frame roof on the pool house, so they were, we were gonna mimic it kind of like that.
And depending on the company, it would be metal or wood, you would?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of like the idea of the metal.
Yeah.
You're talking to the.
And the next thing about the metal too is with the weather we get after, both during season and out of season, that metal will protect, but will structure itself a lot better than just having.
Does that finish every side?
Yeah, and that's the other thing, if we go the wood route, um, they would, you know, pre-treat it or they would treat the wood for the weather, but then need periodically after that, after at least once a year go on and treat the wood to help preserve the longevity of it.
Yes, that's not a big job.
Yeah. I, I don't know how the A frames, you know, look in the pool area like that.
Right, it didn't fit the rest of the structure.
It doesn't seem to fit the, the area of like this pergola. The pergola said it fits for a grab, put an A frame on it, it just doesn't feel like it's in the right spot.
I agree. I guess I would like to see some drawings of some sort to look at. You know, in part of this, um, you mentioned there's somebody in here that there would be recyclable material, the benches are recyclable materials, I don't see that anywhere.
Those are the green ones that are pictured below in the packet?
Those are expanded metal, just covered with plastic.
Yeah, he, he told me that, that, well, at least for vacant apartments, recyclable material is what he had told me.
The minus six, we suck that. Okay.
And if they have debate for these green ones here, do they talk about, um, heat retaining and, when we were in, um, yeah, where, Nashville? And, cause we were looking at benches and stuff and they were talking about that they were, uh, they did not absorb heat and they, so they were cooler and things like this, I don't know if these.
Yeah, I'm not sure on that either, I just know like these particular ones are bought and used for out where it is, everywhere.
If you look at the product specifications, it says that the top finish is thermoplastic, that would indicate to me that there's some kind of a tempering and that I would suspect.
Well, I, again, I've seen lots of them and I think that's a poor choice.
But if you have it covered.
Well, it's covered, that should help with it.
The cover, yeah.
I.
I just remember when we were there, that wood looked really tacky and it was just, it was so.
I don't know, I heard at least three or four in any single structure, nobody's not making a direction to go either, so.
I guess, I guess the A frame roof doesn't bother me at, at all, I mean, I'd love to have a seat for the seating covered.
Mm-hmm. Um. I'm gonna keep the roof the way it is, but I would wanna fill in those gaps for sure, protect it the way it is, just to have a roof on it.
Could you come back the next one with some drawings?
Yes, from the, from the A frame roof or?
Well, she'll be watching A frame.
Some various possibilities for that structure.
What is our budget status for doing this, so where does, where does almost a five thousand dollar bid land in our?
And that one's definitely a little high, um, we do have a little less than two thousand left over from the side research team project. And then we have a bunch of other items that are budgeted to be done this year, like pool furniture, um, creating umbrellas, um, things of that nature where we have a budget that not for it, but, um, as I work that thing, so I'm not gonna spend that whole amount on all of those things, so we'll have money left over from, um, those as well to use on it.
But we still are getting those things, okay. And Tom, I mean, you, you would be comfortable with extending forty nine hundred dollars?
I mean, that, I, that's certainly high for me, but with the way we fold money, um, and the other things we can budget that, you know, would be.
True. That's not, especially if it's something that's gonna last, we're not looking at this again in two years, although like you said, the wood structure is.
No, it's.
And I also, now some too need safety monitor review this year, has to be inside something we do next year with the other structure too, so at least.
Are there, what's the safety issue on this, I mean, is it a chance of falling down, is the top, you said the floors are good, but the top part?
Yeah, mostly it's just the wood is so old that it's splitting in a lot of areas and cracking and you can see a lot of rust as well in places, so it's just not, for safety reasons, it's just in that shape.
So you can't, it's not really seating, it's, it's just one, but like, it's just like two pieces of wood.
Right.
Yeah, it's like two, there's a.
It's not really a bench.
Yeah, it's not really a bench, it's like a square piece of lumber in the middle of it and then there's two very slender, um, pieces on both sides of it as like support and that's it.
Well, for twenty years, we've probably gotten that.
Yeah, I'd say so.
The motion is, is it second or?
We don't have a motion, we have a second, we want to realize.
I'd like to have some drawings.
So, potentially tables discussion. I don't even think you need to table, you can have the motion, business truck staff come back over here and take the report next month. If you can find out what gauge steel we're using on those benches as well, the standard metal and how, or, cause I know there's some expanded metal, I'm like, they, you know, I'm kind of a big guy, I sit on there and a lot of weight and I don't want it to bend and skin protrudes through the bench and, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm not a real fan of the expanded metal benches, so, but if you can point out what gauge material they're using. Pictures don't really get justice, I don't know if they're gonna be real flimsy, when they don't give what type of material they're made out of.
There's a thousand pound capacity, or thousand pound capacity as well, I'd say.
Cause those braces would still be there, they would just be attached to the wood.
Yes, mm-hmm.
At the other end, which would be kind of less awkward to have a metal bench attached to a wooden structure.
Well, I wouldn't, the actual seat part, I don't think they are attaching the top part of it to anything, which, you know.
Creating the actual benches to.
Between those two, um, support beams and then anchored in the ground.
All right, Kate, thank you, come back with some additional information, Holly.
I'm bringing up a proposal tonight to begin a Google ad, ad words campaign that would run through the end of this year. It looks like a big amount of money at three thousand dollars, but that's just, it's just only three hundred dollars a month. And we would be looking at, um, use, utilizing budget out of our general fund instead of transient guest tax. If you recall, we voted to add an additional nine thousand dollars to the marketing budget out of general funds this year and so it would be coming out of that general fund money. And we would be looking at targeting, uh, things that generate revenue, uh, overnight stays and, um, anything that converts in sales tax dollars. So we're looking at lodging and restaurant timing and any events that will bring in visiting opportunities. And our marketing goal would be to increase inquiries first of all and visits that convert to overnight stays. And we would be targeting areas in large cities and in surrounding regions, um, in Kansas, in Oklahoma, in Colorado, Nebraska to begin with. We would be trying these ads to begin with on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday basis, because we know that's when people generally are looking for places to go and things to do, it's when they have time off. And I don't know how that will work, because those are, we're not in our office and so Fridays, but of course not Saturday and Sunday, so we might have to look at that differently as we manage that. It will be managed in-house by staff and we will not be hiring this out. We started the sun trim, um, as you know, hiring it out. And one of the challenges is Dan, as we've taken it back, it has been probably a six week process, I would say, asking to give them exact time to get our information back so we could just acquire the account again. So, um, we don't think we'll make it that direction. And we would be managing it again in-house, um, I think basically that's the information, do you have questions for me?
What is your desire? Motion to approve?
Second.
And then the seconded questions?
Holly, the, um, when you say we want the ads to run Friday, Saturday, Sunday, are you bound to that for the ten months?
No, we are not.
So you can't, is it on a monthly basis?
We can run this ads however we see work, so I can contest it. We can log into our own account and see what words, um, people are keying in on and so we can change it based on that. So maybe we see that we're getting more based upon, um, something such as unique overnight stay, um, weekend away, you know, whatever. It may not be that we're recommending our festivals, our festivals may not pick up anything, but we may be able to pull in that additional audience based upon what we're doing. So, no, we're not, we're not bound to anything, managing this ourselves, we can do it however we see fit and adjust it as we go along. And that truly, I mean, if I'm honest, this is something that's new for me, I don't know a lot about it and I'm learning. And, and across the state, offices, CDB offices are not utilizing this well yet, so this is gonna be a learning process to go.
I would volunteer, you have so much flexibility with this, if you don't like the way a certain ad is performing, you just turn it off. I mean, it's, it's that easy, you can just slice a little buck and then drill it off. It's, it's very, very flexible, it's very.
She's making us feel like this is very difficult, so we've, we're just doing the easy stuff. We'll let you know later for those things.
Additional questions? Roll call please.
Becky, yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carry. Motion carried. Thank you, Holly. Sam, would you step up and talk to us about a light bar for the police car? I'm sorry, the R.
The new police car? I don't have it back yet. I'd like to purchase a Waylon Liberty Two, 48-inch light bar, I have three bids. It comes with a, well, it doesn't actually come, but it comes, there is a sidebar, sidebar module that comes with it, so it's able to program a light bar. Had three bids, 911 Custom was the low bid, $2,300, and the reason it's a lot lower than the others is because they give us the module for free. The others charge over $1,000 for the module.
What is your desire?
I make the motion, we approve the purchase of the light bar module from 911 Custom, in that amount of $2,320.
And then seconded, further discussion?
Here, I'm always confused as to why you can't just take the light bar off the one that's on the cell.
Well, the one that we were trading in, the light bar on it, is 13 years old, and it's not a programmable light bar. And we're going to, the other two new cars we have are programmable light bars, which means that you can hook it up to a computer and pick the light configuration that works best for your safety and visibility, so it's kinda like looking at analog versus digital.
Okay. Can you put some music or something?
It's like Christmas music over the loudspeaker.
Is going on the SUV?
Right.
And when did it go?
In April. This year. This year. All this stuff, here. They're installing the outrating, so they're installing the voting outrating on it. Yeah.
I'm just curious, so you program with your computer, then does that allow you to select different ways, I mean, from time to time, different features of the light bar?
There'll be multiple switches, so that you can program and switch to a different light configuration.
Why?
Because sometimes when you pull someone over, you wanna look at different light configuration than if you're directing traffic.
Yeah. Thanks.
This has takedown lights as well?
Yes.
Alley lights?
Yes.
Does that mean, takedown lights, well, if you look at the, the picture of what the lights are, there's the white lights in the front, so you can shine those on the vehicle or on a house.
Oh, yeah.
And alley lights are the ones that are on the sides of the light bars, so you can shine them.
But a lot of times, luckily they haven't stopped me, but when you see them stop someone on the highway, only the rear lights are blinking, there's really not much in the front that's going, I mean, you can make it do that.
Right. Dave, I think your time's about up. Lights and sirens.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kelly? Yes. Betty? Yes. Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Evil?
Yes.
Betty?
And motion carried. Thank you, Tim. I have ten, something, ten is something that Greg and I talked about, we wanted to start and give an opportunity for our department to give a short report of what's going on in their areas, alternating back and forth, we're gonna start with public safety tonight, Tim. Welcome back. Keyword.
Sure. So I guess the overview of the year so far, January was pretty slow. Don't worry, I think we've doubled the caseload in February than what we had in January, but our total case number is still lower than it was last year, so there is a decline in the caseload, but we are starting to pick up quite a bit. So it's been a lot busier lately than it has been in the first part of the year. This month, the police department will be doing several assemblies at the schools for stranger danger and personal safety. Two assemblies this week, and they're giving personal safety classes to second and fourth graders at the grade school. In cooperation with the Kansas Traffic Safety Resource and Highway Patrol, we're also doing seatbelt enforcement at schools, we'll have something in the paper this week indicating that we're gonna be doing some enforcement for seatbelt, so we'll probably be making sure you wear seatbelts when you're taking tickets. Just letting you know that we're gonna be pushing it very closely.
Tim, can you just very, very briefly say what the seatbelt law is?
While they're trying to make the seatbelt law, they're actually increasing the amount of fine for the seatbelt law now, but basically, and get to where everyone in the car has sort of a seatbelt.
Even in the backseat?
Even in the backseat. But that's not fast, you're not dead.
But currently, it is if you're in the front seat, both?
Both in front.
Both in front, half and half.
Then one under 14 of that.
One under 14 of that, okay. And that is current law?
Right.
Okay.
And no fine? Plus court costs?
No court costs.
Okay, so.
And would you say you would stop someone for a seatbelt infraction? As opposed to stopping them and then noting they don't have a seatbelt? Understood.
Right, I mean, it used to be that you had to have another violation, home or for seatbelt.
That's not that question.
Tim, before you move on, the caseloads are increasing, is that DUI, is that burglary, what are we, what are we seeing around our funding here?
We've had an increase in alcohol and drug violations in the last two weeks, and domestic violence.
Okay.
It tripled the domestic violence calls in the last two weeks, so.
Okay. Warm weather?
Must be, at least, not to that, but I mean, to the frozen, I mean, or just being out around or whatever, and so, maybe weather has a lot to do with it.
And do we try to have two officers go to a domestic violence?
Oh, yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Scary stuff.
Yeah, if we don't have two on, then we, we have deputies or how, or respond to this.
Yeah.
The state, the Kansas is also providing our department with an intoxicalyzer 9000, we're getting it this week, and we're, the entire department will be trained in the use of intoxicalyzer 9000, which is basically a breath machine for DUI, alcohol, we should sort of be able to provide a breath test at our station. Currently, we have to drive in person to use it, or so.
Does it need a certified, make it in the user board, anything else, correct?
That's correct.
That's true.
So.
What's the number of it again?
I'm sorry.
What's the number of it?
9000, intoxicalyzer 20,000.
And there's one for the department, not one for each car?
It's at, it's at the department.
Yes.
And Bill Murray is not starring in the movie. Officer Krikenberg is near completion training, I have the police academy, he graduates a week from Friday on the 18th, so he'll be going to Hutchinson or Yoder Tech, as we call it, and wants to commence for graduation on the 18th. And at that time, then he'll be out and about, and hopefully within a couple of weeks, we'll get through FTO and be on the summer, so, looking forward to that. As far as EMS, Alicia Shosky just completed the training to become a training instructor for the EMS department. So she should be taking over those duties from Chris, who was a training instructor, now is the director, but he's a little too much to do both, so he's going to give up that to Alicia to do. And EMT class, we're nearing the halfway point for that class, so it's going well.
How many?
We have eight, so, potentially come here.
Okay.
Strong five.
Okay.
Which still is great. And the fire department...
Tim, before we leave EMS, what's our rundown compared to years past and then year over year? Was last year about the same, or I mean, the 350 range, or were we at?
Yeah, we're saying it's pretty consistent with the 350 to 375.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you're on pace again, it looks like, to do that. So the transfers that we tried to eliminate and all of that, has that helped? I mean, that's what, that's, you feel that's made a difference to keep it stabilized at 350, 375? The non-emergency transports are dimly...
Yeah, we're still working with those. We could increase our numbers if we would take the transfers, but I just don't think we have...
No, that's not what I'm saying, that's helped us, they don't have manpower to take the transfers, so we're still doing the transfer program.
Right.
Which still are impactful.
Yeah. Firefighter One program is nearing completion, so I think we had five new firemen came on the department who are currently taking the class. I think Brandon is the only one that's not taking it at this time, due to medical reasons. And then we're also working on completing some of the FEMA requirements, you know, we went back and went through the requirements for FEMA training, at the time that we first did it, the 700 was the only one required, now they're requiring 100 and 700, but the recommended would take the 100 to over 700. Which is definitely, it is just an online course that you take to the guidelines of FEMA, and so we're pushing everyone in the public safety department to complete their online training for this FEMA certification, so we'll go on that as well.
Two questions on fire, they have a truck that looks almost like a city truck, so I assume it doesn't carry much water? You know, it's a new one with a light cab or a newsman or something like that, is that like a rural structure fire truck, or what's the, is it a...
A rescue truck, tanker, or?
No. The other day on rural fire, they pulled it off to in front of another building and took off with the, you know, what I would call...
Crash, crash, I'm sorry.
It's interesting to me that they bought that truck, but that's, that's empty, I guess, uninitiated and all that, so then I'll stick to something that Mike was some about is the, we just went through the change on our safety rating, or our ISO rate. Correct?
That's correct.
And we got pulled together with the rural?
That's correct.
And by doing that, are commercial businesses in town penalized?
It's, I don't know if they call it a penalty, but they're gonna have to pay more, you know?
That could be a penalty. Is there a theory or reason, or how did we end up getting pulled with rural? And my experience goes back to my insurance age, if they were a 10 and we were a 7, and maybe we'd gotten to 5 and they were a 7, why would we ever wanna get, why did we end up at 7? Or 5?
We were at 4 and then we're a 5.
So, I mean, in the insurance world, when you're resident, probably doesn't mean anything, if you're in a commercial world, though, a 4 and 5, that's, that's money out of their pocket and all that, I guess the question is, why would we ever allow it to get to a combined rate?
Well, I think there are a lot of contributing factors to the change in the ISO, the biggest one being that they changed their format completely. So it's not just us that are looking at some of the issues with the changes in the ISO, a lot of agencies are. We just recently, like, beginning of last week, got the paperwork back from, showing reasons for the ISO change. So I provided a copy of that to Craig, and we've been going through it to see what items we can do to raise our point level, to decrease or lower our ISO rating. So there's still an opportunity for us to file for the change from the ISO from 5 to 4.
So we went from a 4 to 5, rural went from a rural, it's not a...
Oh, no, what they say was saying.
Hey, they were a 5 before?
Okay.
So we can appeal.
Right. And I think there, and I went through it, and I think there are some things that we can do to raise that point level, it's just gonna take some work. For a truck. I don't know if it's necessarily for a city truck. I, you know, there was a big emphasis on ladder truck.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if really the ladder truck is gonna be the answer, I think there are a lot of other things we can address, and cheaper.
So. Additional questions for Tim? I mean, I'll let that, I'll call it out.
Just follow up on this, so as a person who owns a business, you will communicate with the business community to say you need to do these things?
No, it's not really anything to do with the businesses, it's all about, like, the water pressure levels that the city provides for the fire, the fire equipment that's available, the personnel that are available, whether they're volunteer or full-time, whether your SOPs or guidelines are in place, I mean, it goes through many, many, many different processes of the fire organization to see what level of fire service they can provide to your community, and based on that, they issue a number. And that then has a bearing on how much insurance you pay for.
So do you work with the state fire marshal on this?
Who's the Rainy Navy Team? You know, I don't know the name of the Rainy Navy Team, but I know that they're independent, they're an independent agency, although I think they're funded by insurance companies.
Thank you. I had to put in an alarm on the outside of the building, so the, if the building is on fire and the fire truck is going by, they can hear the alarm.
The audible alarm.
The audible alarm is on the outside, and that was the new thing from the fire.
Yeah, it used to be, you know, a lot of things that could be regulated by businesses would be like sprinkler systems, and that would eliminate a lot of issues for us as far as having a ladder truck, if you have somebody, if you had so, less than a certain number of buildings without a sprinkler system, it wouldn't be required, and they kinda got away from, we don't really care if you have a sprinkler system or not, this year, if you have so many structures, then you have to have this equipment. And it's not just having the equipment, it's having the personnel, enough personnel to make sure you can use all of the wood. So we kinda rounded that too, we have quite a few trucks, we can add ladder truck. How many people are we adding on to make sure we can use the ladder truck? So it's, it's a very complicated process, but like I said, right now, we're gonna be going through that and seeing what we can do to follow the field if we can, and so we can get that changed back. It's pretty complex. Five minutes, we're up.
And far enough.
And one other thing Greg had asked me to, in line with estimates of it, to try to put together some type of tabletop exercise involving active shooter type situations, so I'll be putting something together for that, I haven't got anything definite right now, but I wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. Holly?
Kind of this, we'll have some Friday reports already, but I just wanted to get some highlights. Just last week, we booked six tours for this year, I just fashioned our records, and I have records back for the last five years. This puts us equivalent to our average for the last five years by the end of the year, so already, we're doing a little of the tours. The downside to that, they don't stay here, you know, they're bigger groups, and we don't have enough qualified lodging for that, and so we do lose out on that. One of the tour groups that I thought we would get out of this, I was so excited, was a group of 80-plus-year-old women who had graduated from Marymount College. They typically go to Las Vegas for their reunions, but they decided they wanted to come to Lindesford instead this year, isn't that great, I love that. But anyway, as I got to talking to them and planning, they decided they wanted to have a four-day trip here, they'd drive on Monday, they'd be on Friday before, you know, just full days of activities really, we counted everything, and so started putting this together, and it's time-consuming, you know, to come up with that amount of stuff, and so got it done, included a tour of Marymount College and new construction that's going on there, Amy Kay Pavlovich doing a small service for them at the Chapel, because they had to go to Chapel every day when they were in college. And they wanted to have Brookfield Chicken one time while they were here, but they were worried a little bit about the drive. And they wanted to have Brookfield Chicken one time while they were here, but they were worried a little bit about the drive, even though they're all flying into Kansas City and driving here themselves. And it just so happens that the owners of Brookfield Chicken live at Marymount College on one of the flats, and so they were willing to cater in that lunch. But the rest of the time, they were staying in Linsworth. The very last date that I talked to her, she said, I don't think we'll be staying in Linsworth after all because she don't have an elevator in your facility.
How big they are?
They are staying.
She wrote today.
Yay. Cause I kept talking to her about it. I said, I think you really need to think about this because I said, you won't have the hospitality anywhere else that you'll have in Linsworth. It will be a minimal experience.
It's a huge opportunity for somebody.
Couple of strong swings.
So we're gonna get some football players from the college. To do some of this, to get some.
What do you mean they don't have a elevator in?
They wanted to all stay together in the same facility and there was not a facility that would hold all of them where they could have an elevator. So we talked about how they could break that up differently and possibly use some vacation rooms or something. So I'm glad to know that worked because I was very disappointed because I spent the amount of time.
Okay, good. Super good, super good. It's exciting. I'm glad that we talked.
And we have been seeing just an exponential growth in how our social media marketing is growing, Facebook and Twitter particularly, just exponential growth. We don't know why, I would examine, I think Tricia does a really good job with these things and we have been doing a lot more with Facebook marketing. And we can push out messages for $5. It's very inexpensive, but we can also look at what area we want to target. So as we were looking at some things for this spring, with one of our marketing campaigns, we decided that we wanted to start looking at different demographics. And so I could look up actually online and find areas like in Oklahoma where income was above a certain level and I could go hit and target those communities or even the suburbs of Oklahoma City. And so we were able to target those in some Facebook marketing. Learning some things as I go, you can only have 25% or less of your Facebook picture be texted. So my first one, they kicked out because I used the cover of a postcard that we'll be sending you on. And it had more text than they left, so we'll have to go back and rethink that a little bit. But we're seeing a lot of engagement from this and we're seeing some good return off of that for not a lot of money. And one of the things we're looking at then as we move ahead in this next year, and along with Google Ads that we brought up tonight, is how we use online better. And we know from the state of Kansas and some of the things that they are doing currently, that a lot of people are using their handheld devices to look at where they're traveling. The state of Kansas actually is utilizing tracking software. So if you log into your phone to check where you can travel from Travel, from the Travel Kansas website, when you cross the state line with that phone, they know that you've actually engaged. So they can track that. It's gonna be a little frightening to think about that. That happens. Yeah, we're creeping.
Oh, look, he's out in the air.
Here about a month ago, we changed our constant contact engagement and we went from Tuesdays, which started actually when Carla was in my position. We tried to send out a press release of some sort on Tuesdays. We decided to go to a Friday because we read that most people are tired of working by Friday instead of achieving and looking at, at those kinds of things on Friday that they go a little more closely. And on weekends. And as we did that, we've already seen a one to two percent increase in open rates, so that has been very positive. And we have seen a marked increase in phone traffic and requesting visitors guides, tourism information and general inquiries in the past two weeks, which has been really positive and, and it's been from a lot of interesting things. And our AAA ad that we put in has already been giving us some return. And we just had some really good things coming out of some advertising we've done. And our press releases that we're doing out of our office for the sunstrom for like brides, we've seen a really good open rate down between the 28 and 35 percent mark, which is very, very high. Explore Linsworth comes out on the 20th of March, which is our next addition. For those of you who don't know, this is the most highly read and highly downloaded insert that the Salina Journal does. It has more than double the download rate online of any other insert they do. Last May, our downloads were over 16,000 for the Explore Linsworth insert. One of the neat things that we see about this, we're seeing other communities that are wanting to piggyback and advertise in it because they realize that the readership rate is so high. So we also have to have some conversations with the Salina Journal, who are okay with advertising them, but are not.
Do we have control then?
You know, truly no, we don't, but yes, we do because we have been so good to provide something good for them and they have been very good to work with us. I can't honestly say to them, you can't, because I don't have that kind of contract, that they have very much adhered to our wishes and just said, I wanted to compete with anyone that's from my community. My community pays for most of this. We've provided the articles for you. You're not doing any of the writing. And so we really truly feel that this should not be something that competes with the people that are making this happen and they have been very good to us the whole way. And we have started a postcard marketing campaign and that has been, I think it would be really good. We're gonna try to at least three times this year have businesses, get some of their best contacts. And, and other people in the community can kind of get postcards, you can send them out to family, friends, your best clients, whatever you want to do. And the, the campaign push is gonna be maybe all you need is a weekend in Linsworth. And actually that was Kathy Richardson's idea and it came from just a conversation we were having about some marketing ideas. And I said, actually, that's a good little headline. So we went up there, did some great postcard designs in the office and we'll be doing those. And this past week, we've already handed out about 300 of those. I've told people, you can bring them back to the office and we'll postmark them. We will pay the postage on that. You'll do the work of addressing and then writing, we'll hand written note on it. One of the things I think we do well in this community is make people feel like we have a personal connection to them. And when we do that, it makes people more than willing, I think, to come back in a different way and engage with us in a better way instead of, you know, in state. So we feel like that's important. The sound system update. We have been, he's laughing, pushing this part of the story, I think I'll be, but we have been utilizing Sonos, which is an internet-based sound driver basically. We could log into it and we could play radio stations from around the world that were part of the Sonos system. The bad thing is you get ads. And one of the other bad things, I had Kathy Richardson email me one day and said, ah, you need to change the station. It's dropping the F-bomb. So I go, okay, we get it in our office, so.
And Swedish. Yeah, that's a problem, yeah.
So one of the things that we pushed for, Tim Stewart. I'm throwing this an antique for a radio station for years. And Tim has an extensive knowledge of music. He is far beyond what I would ever dream of being able to do. And so Tim, as a volunteer, was willing to start putting together playlists. We found out that the city already has licensing in place and it covers the playing music downtown. So we don't have to pay anything additional for that. And Tim said he was willing to put together these playlists, so he has been doing that. We thought we would have to buy an additional driver, which was gonna cost probably a couple hundred dollars, which Ad Hop said that they would pay for. She has all of this music on, but we found out that we think a flash drive will work. Just plugged it into my computer, we'll test with it. So Tim has wanted a little bit bigger flash drive and we think we're just gonna try to run it off of that and hope that that works. So he's putting together playlists for all different kinds of events, so that's been really good.
So it's Swedish folk music too?
Some of it. Actually, some of it even is now. We have a little bit blended in, but for, for Swedish events that are very much that way, it will be just that. But for Linsworth, we believe it will be sixties and seventies.
Sure.
You know, some fun things. So Tim has been very, very gracious to volunteer his time and, and his resources. He has just this extensive music collection. It's crazy. It's like 600,000 songs or some crazy amount. Anyway, one of the things though that I think Ad Hop is also going to do is buy wireless Sonos speaker for our office so that we can now hear for the same playlist. Not that we'll hang on all of the time because we might not, but at least it gives us a little bit of feedback.
Is that any of my favorite lyrics? Gay, gay, over games all fear. Just playing one that we left. Seriously?
We've had a lot of comments. We've had people that say, you play Swedish music all the time, I'll kill myself. So we've had people say, it's too much jazz. Your Christmas music is not enough for me, it's 1600s. Actually, I had a lady email me about that and she's from her eighties and she thought we need to be playing classic. Classical 1600s German Christmas music. I didn't answer that, I was just like that. And I'm gonna go and pass this stuff out to the sunstrom and let you just pass these around so you each have a copy and you can kind of be looking at them. And Amy's here to answer questions, but I want to provide this report tonight because I want to also tell you about the job she's doing for us because it's about time she renewed her contract and we'll be looking at that within the next month. Right now, and she has 50 sexy events booked, the final contract's pending. Last year, our total for the year was 58. So we are well honored and we're excited about that. And Amy does a wonderful job at meeting with potential clients, not just in her office, but outside of her office. She's very easy to work with. She's very approachable. And I think it's a good face for not only what we do across the street in our conference center, but for our community as well. And she has put a lot of effort into learning more about our community and she continues to do that all the time and I'm very pleased with that. She makes my job much simpler just by doing such a good job. Our final number in 2014 for the year was 81 events, so we were down last year. And but we're, we're looking at that being very different, our goal. And by the end of May, have 80 events booked with our goal to be 100 by the end of the year. And we do believe if we continue with the trend we're seeing right now, that's very doable. Ads have been placed in the Salina and McPherson publications and promoting weddings. And you see that both of those publications have gained us a great deal of wedding traffic and we feel like that's a good piece of our marketing dollars. And there's a new little McPherson publication called McPherson Candy Company. And some of, you know, Anne Hassler, used to be the CBD director in McPherson and used to work for the McPherson Sentinel, I believe is an editor. She's exceptional at that. So she is also in charge. This is her new publication and it is gaining a lot of ground in our county and in the surrounding area. So we have also not only contacted her about utilizing that for some advertising, but we offered in her wedding issue to provide an article about how to plan an event well. So we put that together and I think it will have some nice return with the sunstrom. And the sunstrom is now listed in its own Kansas Society of Associations membership rather than the CBD. I held the membership for a while. We decided this year to transfer that over to the sunstrom to Amy because I want people to know her and to be clear that she's the one to talk to. And we felt like that was a good idea. We got our new guide and found out they have not listed either one of us, so we are now working on that. They did get our ad in it for the sunstrom, which is good, but we also paid to be listed and so that was not too cool. Trade show attendance, Amy went to the KSA Expo in December and she also went to the Salina Broadhead in January. And she started a Google AdWords campaign and her last fall figured it out. And then once the contract, or the contract ran out and we got all of the information transferred to us, and the end of February, the 29th, she actually began the new campaign that we are managing or she's managing in-house. Out of our office, I already told you about the email blast that we're sending to brides. And we pay for that out of the CBD's fund. We already have a constant contact account and so there's no sense in having another one that you have to pay for. We just set those emails to look like they come from the sunstrom and so they go, they come back that way, so it works out really well. And goals for 2016 include an out of office sales calls and comprehensive social media marketing campaign. And we're looking at how we manage that with small staff. There are some things called, different things like HootSuite where we look at, it will schedule posts for you and so we can put some things out possibly that way. Staff, as you know, the staff that's working at the conference center right now is doing a phenomenal job. Amy has hired, just some wonderful people that work well together. They run events well, they're very professional. And it just kind of has organic, it worked itself out, but they all love working for her. In fact, if I had a substitute early on when we had, you know, the events that coincided with them, she had scheduled prior to her hire, the staff was really sad to see me come in the door, I think a lot of the time, because they really have enjoyed working with her. Probably one of the hardest things is the process of scheduling. Staff is done manually and it's very, very time consuming. So Amy is right now looking to see if there is an app that she can utilize to make that process a little bit simpler. And overall, the staff is doing an exceptional job and we're really pleased with that. And building maintenance, just constant issues with keeping light bulbs working. We have a lot of light bulbs that burn out, which seems to be an ongoing issue. Air filters being changed and a couple of wall crafts seem to be repaired, keeping the facility clean. And so right now we're brainstorming and some solutions for how to just stay on top of these ongoing issues. If we continue to book the way we're booking, that means less of her time is available for these kinds of things. And currently she is going around and doing some cleaning and some of these additional maintenance things that are not the best use of her time. Her time is very utilized during the sales calls and things like that. So, and do you have any questions for either of her or all?
I have a question or a comment really. That is, this is all good news and thank you for presenting this.
And it's very good.
But I would still say, when we have, we, I'm speaking myself, but as a councilperson, when you talk to someone and they, you talk about the sunstrom, one of the first questions they say is, is anything happening there? I mean, do they, do they have any things in there? And of course you do, and of course there's a lot, but I think communicating that to the public while very difficult is also so important. I don't know whether we have the newspaper come and take some pictures of events or, I don't know the answer.
You know, that has been really hard because you have those sides, you have people that really want to know about these things and it's important to allow people, I think, because as a community, we feel as a community, we own that.
Yes.
We take ownership in it. But many of the people that utilize it don't want their events promoted. Those are private events for their family or for their meeting. And not only that, but we are very protective of who we're marketing to and selling to because one of the things I found out in a meeting just about two weeks ago, there is no one in this entire state, including in Overland Park, in Dodge City, in bigger communities, that is marketing to anyone outside of the state, with maybe the exception of which, me. We are all competing for the same weekend business in the state. And so we have to be very careful about just stating who we sell to. And one of the things that I did not bring up in this list, and one of the things that Amy put together this year that has worked very well is an annual contract. We've not done this before. We had an organization who was utilizing this somewhat, our facilities last year and loving it. And so she put together an annual contract, which brings them in at least once a month. And they're utilizing it more than that. And but it's on a use or lose basis. If they don't utilize that amount, they just lose the money and that's how the contract is written. But it keeps us knowing that we have a consistent month-to-month business and we're hoping to do more on that. And I truly believe that the way she sells that will happen.
So the debt double for this year, I see they're down for 24 events. You've had that in case two.
I'm sorry, yes.
And you said 12 last year, now it's 24.
Yes. It's two separate, it's two separate things. So there's a bulk contract for 12 events and then they have a separate contract that we actually do monthly as of now, that's another 12 events.
Okay, awesome. Any other additional questions for all of you?
The app. Is there any way that, do we know how successful our app is, our travel app?
Yeah, not very good. It has not been.
Not very successful or you don't know?
I know, it's not very successful. I can log in and see the downloads and it's been very disappointing to me. With the amount of time it's taken to maintain it, it's not as well as I would like. As we look at renewing our billboards over the next year, I would like to include that on more of our billboards, but I'm not sure. I'm just not sure that that will do the trick. It's not an expensive thing every year, but it is expensive if it's not well utilized. You see a lot of people that want to either pick up a brochure still. They like this, they like this multi-page brochures with the pretty pictures and the logo. And not only that, we have seen exponentially the amount that we email out. And a lot of people are happy with it if they get it by email and they can get that to be, I can look through it that way. So no, it has not been, it's not been very successful as I would have hoped. Thank you.
That's all.
I'm not sure that Holly answers this or Amy either, but the big stain on the south side of the building that has been.
Rubble.
I mean, I think that's terrible.
And it is a stain. What happened there, the company that, and the sign dripped. The company that built the building engagement touch-up paint, it did not match. And the reason being that is a stuccoed wall and they impregnated the stucco with paint. And what they did not do was give a sample to us of that to be able to actually take somewhere to have it matched. And so the only way to get a good match is to knock a piece of the building off and then go take it to have it match. And my husband is an architect doing construction, says he will never get a good match. He said, honestly, what should have had to been done is that entire section would have to be replaced and redone. She said, "Honestly, what should have had to been done is that entire section would have to be replaced and redone." So we will never get, probably get a good match.
Well, even so, it, it seems like it should be made better. Uh, I don't know.
We have tried probably no less than about eight paint changes.
I don't know. It, it just...
But we haven't taken off a piece of stucco.
Yes, we have.
Yes. And that's, that is closing, so.
Well, that, I mean, it looks bad.
I'm trying to figure out, does it go a little better than the ground?
Huh?
Does it go a little better?
No. It started out as spots, they're not very big. But then, then Williams Construction, when they were trying to fix it, just made them bigger and bigger.
What if we spent a little money and just put a, a different color box there and then redid our Sunset logo? And to cover up all the bad spots. Otherwise you could repaint the whole wall.
Yeah.
I mean, I think something needs to be researched. What are we gonna do? Because it's glaring.
It doesn't look professional, I think.
And a lot of people think it's a water leak. And, "Oh, my gosh, you've got a water leak there already?"
So I think you will always have trouble with matching it, even, even if we got it perfectly because of the stucco on that side of the building, it's the south side of the building. So even in six months to a year's time, that paint's gonna be a different color than the old. Um, that's an almost impossible, according to my husband, I'm not professional. He said, "That's almost an impossible issue to fix without..."
You're creative, Holly. Bring back the... A little bacon, you're creative.
The logo is a little more...
Well, I think it's putting something else over like this. Yeah, I mean, paint the square and then a new logo. Yeah.
That's what that is, though.
Mr. Dunn?
I'm gonna talk that off.
You have a big department, Mr. Dunn.
And I'm not gonna talk that off. My street department, uh, we're currently in tree trimming mode. Today we went out to the big ditch and there was a lot of talk about trees up there on the high end of the town. See where it makes much difference. Anyway, we're trimming the big ditch now. We've got a few various roadway areas for, uh, with that and then...
Are you yelling stones as you go on the big ditch?
Yeah, we all, we got more of them.
Okay.
Um, after that, we'll be moving into, uh, curb and gutter mode. And where it will start is on Third Street with the, uh, paving will be one hundred mile mark. Um, water department, we've seen it for the last month over. And, and the Friday board will continue to exercise valves. It's, it's state required now. We may do the entire town every year, so we're, stay with that layer. We don't have anything else going on. Uh, whatever front office can handle it, we install radio meters. Uh, and we can only put in so many, she can only enter so many at a time, so. It's kind of a one step forward, two step back sometimes.
The ones we just bought?
Yeah, those were still last year. We didn't give them last year because of the ones we bought were defecting. And we sat on them all year waiting for them to be replaced. And we're putting those in now and then we'll have the new batch to, to work on. Um, part of the point of exercising the valve, we, we discovered valves that do not work. Um, never since we finished putting all the water lines in, what we wanted to do next, it's been our... Our plan is to start replacing valves that don't work. We currently know about a valve and, uh, well, the first one we plan to work on is at Garfield and Second. And we're just, we're probably gonna have that intersection port pretty seriously. We'll try to maintain one lane of traffic through, towards the south, but it's gonna be real tight. Uh, we're also gonna start installing test stations at Erreswater, we have pits around town. We'll add for example lots of it. It depends on people that left in their home and take samples and they take them and, uh, things don't always work out right. So, uh, we'll install these test stations in the rear pits. We take our own samples when we get them. We'll have to, uh, rely on somebody being home to help us. Water department, uh, they're also tree trimming. We don't have any construction going on this year, so, uh, what we're actually gonna do is, uh, maybe just try to work on the next section that we've normally hired a tree trimmer on. And if we can actually totally wipe out the section for, for the next year, at least make it where, uh, there's hardly anything to do there and maybe move on. We'll try and, try and do more for ourselves and then just what we have to hire out. Um, another thing we're gonna look at is the, uh, camped trees that neither our, our tree trimmer or our son, we both have the same length of truck, two to five feet, but we can't reach. There's still trees hanging up over the lines and, uh, we're gonna, we're trying to get a handle on how many that is, how big a problem it is and then perhaps hire a company with a eighty-foot boom to, uh, take some of those fire trees. That's the wish right now, a little, uh, see what we can do. Uh, the wish for, uh, he's currently doing repairs to the sliding wagon. Uh, very, uh, the, the replacement, we pack all the bearings. Uh, tomorrow, both Chris and Tobin will attend class on process controls and monitoring alarms. I'm very excited about it. New tech, so. See what, see what's coming down the road that might help us out in the future. Um, one of the things we've been, Chris has been looking at is, uh, replacing pumps at the Emerald Lake List Station. He's about ready to get into on that, but, uh, we've got the water convention coming up at the end of this month. And we wanna do a little more talking to the vendors and make sure that what we think we wanna do is correctly. And then we're probably coming to people, uh, for the next budget of purchases. And then when everything else gets all done, then we'll start cleaning lines for the... We saw...
Uh, Tim, when you say the, like, you're talking about, um, second, what did you say, Second Garfield? I mean, is that, is there a fire hydrant there? When you say you express you, what exercised the valve? Was that on the main water line?
Yes, and that intersection has been like, the folk, the, the crossing point for about three different projects. And they've all, everything's messed up. We want to go in there and clean it up.
Okay.
Get it square, get it level, get valves work.
It doesn't really have anything to do with the fire hydrant?
No.
And all that.
No.
Thank you. Tim, the question I have, in the southwest part of town, we've been working on a ditch project for quite a while. And I think I saw where you were getting going and then a homeowner or somebody turned the water on. And, and stopped the progress, maybe.
Uh, we have, we would have been done that day anyway.
Are you done?
It might be more than that, yes.
Okay, that answers my question then. It's, it's all about communication.
We're doing a line, but yes, we're done.
Okay. So we're, we'll get the calls anymore?
I hope not. It may, but we've done what we can do.
Okay. Uh, additional questions, Mr. Dunn? Thank you all very much. I think those are very informative and, uh, look for the rest of the team next time. Any others under eleven? Hearing none?
No, we're adjourned.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Move to second, and all of us, please, say aye.
Aye.
Those saying aye. Thank you very much.